Good evening, welcome to our workshop and we're starting off with a presentation from the middle school and Mary Ann or Director Brenchek would you like to introduce our guest this evening?
Yes, I would. I have the privilege of working with the middle school students at Lewiston Middle School and six month long, five month long project I'm working on pedestrian safety and this is kind of like the finished product and so they have an overview to show you and I'm gonna let Sarah Lavassa introduce the students and then you know really looking at some PSA's, some you know service announcements, public service announcements that kind of go towards pedestrian safety and why it's important and we think students educating other students and educating us is more powerful than us talking at them. So it's been a great experience and I invite Sarah to introduce them.
So this is a short introduction to Team Glacier's expeditionary learning experience that we had.
Excuse me, do you mind pulling the microphone closer to you for the...
Not at all.
You can actually also just pull it towards you, move the base.
Just pull it towards you.
There we go.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, you can.
Not just for us but for our home audience, so thank you.
Understood. So again, my name is Sarah Lavassa, I teach on Team Glacier and this is Team Glacier's expeditionary learning experience that we had for the past few months and I'm first going to introduce you to Chloé Dubois.
Hi, Council. I'm here tonight to share Team Glacier's expeditionary learning experience slideshow. My peers have worked multiple hours on these PSA's and I'm so glad that some of them could be here with us tonight and hello to the viewers who are not here with us tonight. But we're going ahead to start with why public service, why we chose this and why we think it's important our community really goes through this and learns about it. The journey we just completed is about public service. We chose public service because we want to use what we have learned to help our community. What were some of the goals of our public service expedition? The goal is possible, oh what? Okay, number one, learn outside of the classroom. This goal is possible by physically leaving our classroom to learn something new and to be in a different environment. The photo displayed to your right is just one of the many examples of our expedition. Number two, have a real life experience.
Back to number two.
We experienced what it was like to work in a real profession. We learned from experts in the field and the picture above, project engineer Mr. Niehoff speaks to students about traffic and crosswalk safety in Lewiston, Maine. This was very important for us to learn to help us as we get older and will eventually be able to drive and just today as we cross one of the many busy streets in Lewiston. Number three is experience what is it like to work in different public service professions. During our expedition, we had three rotations, one being police visited us, including our very own Officer Keith, number two, we visited the fire department, and finally, public works. These three, all being different, have community in common. We all enjoyed the interactive feel all of these had. It made us feel like we were really working the job. Number four is explore a topic through hands-on learning. Students used scaled maps to measure sidewalks with the goal of making them safer to cross. Following that, we also went outside to learn how to measure crosswalks. This was interactive for students to be able to do.
And next, we have some photos of each place that we went to. The first place that we went was the fire department down on College Street and here's a few photos of that and what we learned about the ladder. Students were also able not only to see it but to climb up on that, not on the ladder, but on the machine. And here are some examples of us trying on the equipment. And next, we went to, well, we didn't actually go to the police department, they came to us. And here's...
We got to go in the cop car. That's me, I wasn't driving, don't worry guys, I can't yet. And there's a photo of one of our students in a getup, like they...
To try on the different...
They got to try on everything, I'm sorry. And the, was this the second one?
This is the third one.
The third one, I'm sorry. We visited Lewiston Public Works, which is located as we know as 103 Adams Avenue. And there displayed is the sign shop we visited, which was very cool because we got to learn how to make the signs, the process, et cetera. And there is some pipes and fire hydrant, which was pretty cool because they also showed us the pipe that has unfortunately bursted multiple times at our school, which I'm sure you are aware of.
Right in front of our school.
And public works in action. This is something that Sun Journal posted. Our school was very thankful that they did because it gave us an opportunity to want to be able to do this, knowing that you get rewarded by being posted on Sun Journal is a great feeling, especially for a middle schooler, I mean, who wouldn't want to be on the news? We collaborated with the Lewiston Public Works Department to take action in our learning. We made the crosswalk near our school safer for our students and community. This is how we served our public. This was a physical project that we did that the public gets to see every day if you go near the street, near the armory. I think this is an amazing project and we could definitely do more of these in the future.
Here are a few of the photos along the way. Us working outside.
But I would also, at the end of this, I would like to celebrate the people who made this possible. We would like to thank the teachers, public work staff, fire department, our own Officer Keith, and Lewiston Police Department. We thank you all for making this expedition possible, we wouldn't be able to have done it without you. We would also like to thank you for taking the time to visit us today. We just really appreciate this project and I appreciate you guys being here tonight, especially me. And thank you, Ms. Lavassa, for filling in for Malika today, it means a lot for me. Thank you guys for listening and I appreciate your time.
Now... As I say, we have a few PSA, example PSA's to show you.
We'd like to introduce our first PSA, number our very own, Amani Walton. Her PSA was on crosswalk safety. And Kiera Tardif.
Hello, I'm Amani Walton.
I'm Kiera Tardif.
Can you please sit down and talk into the mic? And you can pull up another chair.
They just wanted to say their names, I think.
Please say, please say your names into the mic for the record.
Hi, I'm Amani Walton.
I'm Kiera Tardif.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Amani and Kiera. We are not done yet, we have a few more to view. Just give us one moment.
Hello, everyone, my name's Ayub Bahad. It's very good to present my PSA to you guys and my PSA title is Earth Destroyers. It's about climate change and global warming. Without further ado, let's play the video.
And our last one.
Thank you, you. And last but not least, I would like to, oh, mine. I would like to have Enrique Suarez, please come up here for your PSA.
Hello, my name's Enrique Suarez and unfortunately, my partner who did this with me currently isn't here right now, but his name is Ethan Fortuna and our PSA is on texting
Thank you very much.
Thank you, PSA, for the PSA's, guys. You guys did amazing, I'm glad my peers could be behind me today, working on this. I'd also like to say, if Malika, you're watching this, thank you for the opportunity. I'm sorry you couldn't make it tonight, but thank you, Ms. Lavassa, again and thank you, Council, yet again. I'm pleased to be in front of you guys today, but I hope you guys all have a great evening and I want Lewiston to know that Lewiston Middle School is indeed trying to change our city for the better and work with you guys. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, it would be great if we could get a picture.
Exactly.
Just stand in front of you maybe, is that...
Yeah. Well, yeah, well, you can stand up here or walk down.
They can stand up and then you guys walk around back.
Great job.
Great job.
Yes, that'd be great.
Did you get a photo?
Have a good summer.
I just wanted to have a couple minutes to answer any questions and do kind of a, just a short, brief overview after following such an act like that, right? About the work that we've been doing to improve the pedestrian amenities all throughout the city since the Heads Up report came out in 2016. So I did that little timeline, more for me as well as, you know, new people kind of looking at what we have done in the past. The Heads Up Grant is a national piece that came to the state as extra funding. So it's a very quick turnaround funding, we're putting projects in July and we get funding in January. So it's outside of the other funding projects that we have, so we've already gotten two rounds. So the first one was, I think, 250, the second round was 400 and something. So we really have gotten some good chunks of cash and, you know, not only for buying the flashing beacons like we put in originally at that intersection at Frye and Main, but curb cuts and handicap ramps and we're looking at lighting and lighting crosswalks now. They were all excited. But I just wanted to give you a little bit of that rundown. We've never really done an inventory on all our sidewalks, we're just starting to do that second, every 10-year inventory on all the streets. So we really do need to continue to work on, you know, prioritizing not only the reports that we had from, you know, four or five years ago, but keep it current. We're now fully staffed in engineering, so that's exciting as well. But I think, you know, we've made some great strides and, you know, working with the schools is dear to my heart, I mean, education is part of everything that I've ever done and that's the reason why. It's not easy, oh my gosh, I went to the middle school, it's exhausting for those teachers, but the kids do need to get out. You know, this is how we get to promote public service. And I like the Heads Up approach for not any finger pointing. The driver, it isn't the driver's fault, it isn't the pedestrian's fault, it isn't the bicyclist's fault, it's everybody needs to be more mindful. So I love that, that's the undertone of it. They support, you know, they funded the project to work with these guys. So I, you know, I really feel like, you know, we've making, you know, some significant impacts all throughout the city and just knowing that you guys kind of get that summary list every once in a while. So I promised Patrick Adams, who's the head of this pedestrian and bicycle safety for all of the state, that, you know, we'd keep tracking it, we'd keep tracking the progress that we've made and new things come up, you know, as we look at new improvements. So some of the things that aren't on this list are, you know, we're looking at a crossing at the bottom of Ash, where that parking garage that lands in the middle of the street and everybody crosses on a diagonal, we're trying to find a safe way to do that, that's gonna be in our new applications. So it's nice that you could, you don't always have to pivot, you can work quickly on these things. So when it happens every year, you kind of get some in the queue and, you know, I think the safe, the goal of this project is to see everybody do good things with the money. So they're seeing us getting them done, coming over the hurdles that we need to do to try to make things work, that we'll continue to be successful with that. So if you have any questions, I certainly could take notes if there isn't a specific intersection listed here, but there is a lot of things that we're doing and it's geared towards this Heads Up activity with the bicycle and pedestrian being more of an even priority with the vehicle traffic.
Yeah, no, thank you very much, Director Brenchek. We have a walkable city and anything we can do to increase pedestrian bicycle safety, yeah, is very much appreciated and necessary, as we reminded from one of the PSA's. Councilor LaChapelle.
Yes, Director. I like the colored crosswalks, it does pop. And I also am particularly fond of some of the designed sidewalks down by the Public Theater, you have the masks. Is that a program that we can possibly put out to some of the local businesses that are on a corner that want to sponsor a crosswalk, that if they have a logo for their industry or something like that, they can just pay to have those logos put across? I don't know, maybe to offset some of the costs of painting crosswalks each year, just a thought.
Sure. My favorite one's the hot dog by Simone's.
By Simone's and...
What's hot is it's there like an individual stencil that's purchased for that?
Correct.
And they take a little bit longer than what we do with a regular crosswalk, so it's the maintenance and upkeep of them to just say, let's open a big program with all businesses. So that was, I think, four or five original ones that went in as part of an art project. Of course, the new Pride one is a little, you know, different, that's got some temporary paint in there with the permanent paint. But, you know, I think all of those pieces kind of cross over to be in art, you know, so certainly, and the state engineer approves things like this, so he said he was not concerned with roads that are 25 miles an hour, so as you get onto the 30 mile an hour roads, 35, you want the standard high intensity crosswalks for safety, so, you know, there's certainly opportunities, I think, still.
Just, you know, just the floor, doobie floor, flower down here, they could put flowers or something like that. I'm on a corner, I will, I say that because I would be interested in paying and I would pay to have it redone every year, just a thought. And are we getting a crosswalk on Main Street in front of that house that Jason Boy or...
The clubhouse.
Clubhouse.
Yes, yes. That was funded with the second round of Heads Up money, so...
Looking ahead, okay.
Yeah, looking ahead and Montello in Maine was funded in the first round, so I think it's important to have them rotate, you know, like certain like signals kind of manage traffic, is that they're gonna see another one, they're gonna see another one. So the repetition of them is very important and then for those intersection, as you've got, you know, pretty wide span of road where the traffic speed, the speed limit is 35, it's probably really 45 in reality, is we're looking at overhead signs that just kind of accentuate pedestrian crossing here. So we'll do that at both.
And managing them that there's not a crosswalk every 20 feet either, so it's that balance. But I like the idea, it looks good, keep up the good work.
Councilor Jelenaus.
Thank you. So I was looking through this a little bit and there's mention of the transportation study being done or requested of MDOT and I wondered, like, they could come back and say, you need more, I mean, we have a plan, but couldn't they come back and actually say that we need even more than what we have planned? Because their jobs to identify the gaps...
The intention of this, go ahead, was the state level is to make sure we don't have gaps and there's consistency.
Right.
You know, certainly the walkability, you know, can you get from Lisbon Street to the riverfront, you know, what's that look like? So that's what the, and the Act of Transportation also includes bicyclist as well, so where are our gaps with that? Do we keep them on the main road? Do we building our roads so that we're having lanes for them as a priority, even if it slows down traffic?
What's the timeline for that?
The village funding is new funding, so it'll probably be a good year out for approval on funding and then, you know, they'll work on it for a whole year. And that's a regional, so statewide, you get better funding for something like that when it's a regional plan. So we're working with the Complete Streets Committee for doing that. So we're working with the Complete Streets Committee for doing that. And they had some mocked up plans and Doug Green has done a ton of work on that and we're going to miss him as he retires. So it's kind of putting all those notes into a real plan.
Counselor Pease.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
We've had a three-week break.
The crosswalks that are like on Jefferson Street that are solar operated, are those something that we can, are they very expensive? Can we put them in other places? When people want to cross, you push it and then the lights flash. And I think that's a great idea.
The mid-block crossings, they call rapid rectangular rapid flashing beacons, RFPs, are about 30, 40,000 to put in. Then you have improvements when you touch something for pedestrian, you need to make sure the handicap ramps are there and all that kind of stuff. So we have 18, I believe, now? It's amazing how many we do have. So we're looking at new funding. So the new funding round that'll go in in July, there's areas that you think that haven't been hit yet, like I mentioned, the Ash area by that parking garage, a lot of pedestrian traffic there. We've had some complaints and some concerns around the Basilica as well. So that's another spot that we're looking at. So, yeah, do we, we still want ideas if you see spots that, we have the police looking as well because another new part of this plan is lighting up a crosswalk. So when you hit the button, it actually lights the crosswalk. So that's a new, that's a new piece. And we thought we could even go back to some of the ones that were put in and add the lights. So we're looking at where's that nighttime pedestrian activity the highest that we want to try that. So I do have the police chief and his crew, Carly and them, helping look at that. What are some areas that you think we could put that in? Like Sabattis and Wood, for example, or Sabattis and Oak. We're doing a couple of new ones there right now. Those are just getting constructed. Do we want to light them up? You know, like so, that's another safety aspect.
And the, and the little posts that you put up at the crosswalks to kind of keep everybody in and everywhere. Are those being taken down at winter time and then put back up? Okay. I was going to say, that must be an awful thing to plow around.
And they're flexible too. So the fire trucks need to get around a corner. They just tip right down. But it does work. It does work.
I noticed it worked.
Another thing that works that surprises me is there's a project where you can actually paint the whole intersection and we thought it would be a distraction. And the newest studies show that to be very effective. For example, at Adams and Bartlett, it, we can't put those, we've got too many big trucks coming around there. But thinking about trying something like that because there's a lot more pedestrian activity with the fields right there, even the Italian bakery, you know, like all that area is pretty busy where in the middle of that hill, the mosque has wanted a crosswalk, but it's not a safe place to put it. So how do we kind of make that more walkable for that route all the way up to Birch, you know, from Adams to Birch? It might be painting on the ground and kind of using those delineators coming down the hill from Bartlett. Sorry, I'm French.
Don't be sorry. Don't be sorry.
I'm in the right crowd. I'm in the right town. I know that. But as, you know, slowing down traffic coming down Bartlett, because you can cruise down that street.
Oh, yes. It's amazing. The other thing, if you decide to paint, the, make sure it's fluorescent and it lights up. I don't care what color it is, as long as it's bright. Make them aware of it. And thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Further comments from the council? Director Brunchek, thank you very much. Counselor Harriman.
So this list that says January 2022, you received the second Heads Up grant. What is the timeline for those three improvements there?
So these ones, we're looking at preliminary engineering right now. So we've gone out and looked at what do we generally want? And we put out the task order for the engineer to start designing them, where the other ones are just going out to bid. So it takes a little bit more than a year, but you have five years to spend the money. I just don't want to miss a year without getting some money. So we'll keep it rolling. And it's good to show progress all along. So I was thinking they all should be put, be put in already. But it does take a little bit more than a year to get funding, design, feedback from people in that area, you know, which is, which is where those two stand now.
Okay. Thank you.
Mercy Perkoo.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, City Council. The last workshop item you have is kind of doing some information gathering regarding the shelter ordinance. As the memo indicated, when the moratorium was put in place, there was discussions to have this information gathering to kind of see what elements the council would like to see in a permit, license process and the ordinance related to that. And then looking at the workshop at the July meeting, both the Shelter Committee and myself would either collaborate, do two different workshops, kind of getting us next steps and where we're at at that point. It gives us August to look at adjusting any lingering outstanding items. And then because this is an ordinance, you're going to need to advertise it as well as do two readings on that. And so that tees it up from a schedule standpoint to have the first and second reading in September prior to the expiration of the moratorium. So in your council packet, you had a series of ordinances that were provided, including Brunswick, particularly and the city of Portland. I would view those as being the two most complete ordinances, as well as, just to give you a frame of reference of what we did with the methadone clinic and because similar concerns were raised when that came to fruition and then what was put in place and what steps were put in place. So both the council and the public felt secure about moving forward with this. So at this juncture, and all of this information has been shared with the ad hoc committee. So I know I had a conversation with the co-chair Craig Sattlemeyer. So he is aware of the timeline and we talked. It looks like it's, it's at least doable at this point in time. My hope is that there, as both groups kind of reached that funnel point, getting it ready for the city council, that there's some collaboration, not redundancy in the work that's done. So the finished product includes elements that everybody agrees to and everybody feels comfortable with. So at this point, I guess I would turn it over. I have some, you know, introductory questions that we can run through or if you as individual counselors have elements that you want to see already incorporated in the ordinance, I can kind of keep a tally list on those as well. So some of the initial things, and I can kind of start off the discussion and maybe that'll help, is first of all, do we want a permit? Do we want a license? That's the first question. And if so, how frequently do we want it renewed? Brunswick has it renewed every five years. Portland had an annual renewal. And keep in mind, the ordinance that is in your packet has been, since been repealed by the city of Portland, but it's still a model to kind of use and, and take what we'd like out of it and incorporate. There's a lot of similarities in boilerplate language between those two ordinances. What kind of fee do we want to put in place for this licensing? Do we want to keep it a nominal, a nominal amount? Brunswick's was $30. Portland was more expensive and they broke those, their fees down between the number of beds at that particular location. The, I think it was fewer than 41 beds was $250. And then the beds that exceeded that capacity, they charged $500. Do we want to look at it being forward-looking only? Both the illustrations that were provided for you had a snapshot in time and were prospective only. They did not go back and require shelters prior to that. I think Portland did have a caveat within theirs that if an existing shelter wanted to expand, change purpose, that type of thing, then at that point it would trigger the licensing aspect of it. But if they were to continue operating status quo, it would not trigger a licensing from that standpoint. I'm assuming based upon tradition and that the council would have the authority, the final authority to approve the licensing after seeking fire, public safety code, you know, the normal departments checked off that we have with other similar situations. So I'm assuming that language would probably be somewhat boilerplate. Most ordinances include the main state housing authority monitoring program and require the annual monitoring as well as the, if we do an annual renewal or even if we do over a period of time renewal, it would require the reports to be furnished to the city of Lewiston as part of that process, which is kind of a good check and balance. Our team here, we can check from a zoning standpoint, a code enforcement standpoint, but clearly, main state housing are the experts in this area and they would be the one to truly be able to vet, to look at the statistics and capture any concerns that they have. So it provides that check and balance. Both Brunswick and the city of Portland required that report to be furnished to them. The other component is both ordinances had a total bed capacity for the municipality. So is that something we want to consider? And if so, what's that number look like? And do we include, I'm assuming we include the existing facilities available at this point? The appeal process, we already have in place, but do we want to do anything different as far as the appeal process? And then with the methadone clinic, we actually did background, criminal background checks as part of the owners and applicants. So that was something a little bit different that you did not see in the ordinances for Brunswick and the city of Portland. So is that something we want to do? We don't want to do? Those are kind of the, kind of higher level decisions and then we can get down to, bless you, a little bit more detail.
Counselor LaChapelle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for giving us this information. Might I suggest that, I love all those questions that you have, and I'm looking at the time, there's not enough time for all of us to answer those. Would that be possible just to send that question to all of us on an email that we can take our time and answer some of those and send it back? And you might have the opportunity just to go through it and put a section on there that, any other suggestions?
Okay.
Because the operational, the operation of the shelter also. So I have some questions and concerns on that.
Okay.
So I know if I just went down each of them, it's, we're not going to have time to go through it. That would be my suggestion. I don't know. I'd open it to the council if anybody disagrees with that or has different thoughts.
Counselor Jelinez.
Just a, thank you. Just an additional thought. So first of all, I'm just really pleased to know that the Shelter Committee is going to be coming to us on July 19. So I see that as a group. And then you talked about.
I think it's, yes, it is the 19th. For some reason, I was thinking the 16th.
What's wrong?
But then you, you talked about, so you talked about that group working and coming forward with some recommendations and then almost a separate group looking at ordinances and that sort of thing. I guess I was questioning, in my mind, as you were speaking about that, I was wondering, who composes that group? And I love the idea of those two groups collaborating for a presentation. I mean, I think it's one thing, and these are great preliminary questions, but frankly, I don't think any of us are experts in this area. So I'm happy to give some feedback. But I would think that the committee, the committees and the group that's going to be looking at this is going to have a whole lot more, you know, as you referenced, main state housing, they're going to have a whole lot more experience in pulling this together. So I just wondered, who, what's the composition of that second group that you referred to?
As far as the city group, at this point, I would assume planning and code enforcement and the city clerk and I would work together on a draft. I would be sharing information with the ad hoc committee and, and what the template looks like. Because I think there's value in more eyes looking at this. And it's one thing to write an ordinance. It's another thing to look at overarching concerns. And I think there's concerns both at a residency level. I think there's concerns at elected officials level. And then, you know, the homeless population obviously has concerns and those wanting to help that group. So I think at least, I'm not sure the direction. I do get the minutes from the Shelter Committee. And I don't think they've dialed down enough to look at a draft ordinance yet. So I'm hoping if I at least work on that track, they can work on other efforts that they're looking at and we can kind of meet in the middle. That's my hope for it.
Thank you. That sounds good.
Counselor Harriman.
Thank you. I was just, I was a little confused at the, what the connection would be between a methadone clinic and a homeless shelter or resource center and what, like, yeah, just.
Why I use them as a template? Because that's the one similar circumstance that had some public concern related to bringing it into the community. And recognizing those concerns and the elements or the steps that we put in place in that ordinance, I think the sitting council at the time, once they had that one-year mark after meeting with the police chief, that was outlined there and looking at some of the other feedback from the other departments, I think the elected officials at the time were pleasantly surprised that it did go much better than had anticipated. And, and that's kind of the template. You have to start somewhere. And that's probably the easiest, looking at that piece as well as the model that Brunswick and the city of Portland are using. You know, some, there's a lot of boilerplate in there and then there's some elements that, okay, we have two say this, one say that. What, what do we want to land on?
Okay. Because I did see some things in there that would really, you know, would really limit things. Like there's a 1,000-foot buffer around parks and schools and churches, which would basically, I mean, it would cover the entire DR district and almost the entire NCB district, which are the only two where shelters are allowed. It would basically eliminate the entire downtown and even, even more of the neighborhoods around it from, from being able to have a shelter. And I, I just also didn't, yeah, I guess I see the point now.
Yep.
But it seems like two different, different clientele.
Most definitely. And, and that was, like I said, that was at least something that kind of had the same political concern as the subject matter. And it seemed like even though there was a concern, they moved forward with it, thinking that steps were put in place. And it did have a very effective way of reaching a conclusion that worked out very well for the community, the services that were provided as well as the constituency and the public officials.
Okay. Thank you.
Counsel McCarthy.
What was the reason why Portland suspended their ordinance? Do you know?
I'm not sure if it's a funding issue. I don't know.
Dave, are you still back there?
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know either, actually.
Okay, then that doesn't help me. But I can, I can research that and see if I can find out and send that out.
So is there just nothing in place right now?
Correct.
Yes.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Counsel LaChapelle.
They're spending $25 million for 200-bed shelter that they're putting up. So that's in the works right now in Portland. So there, there is a shelter going with $25 million. I, and the policy, I have no idea. But I know there's something there, they are moving forward that way.
And I think the other thing that may factor in, and I'm not sure it's going to get enough traction fast enough with the hubs that they're looking at throughout the state. That's the other piece that, again, I think. state, that's the other piece that, again, I think they're a little bit slow on getting started, and it would be great to see what that model's going to look like, because it would be unfortunate for the ad hoc committee to go through a process, the council to go through an ordinance process, and then have this hub system that the state is looking at potentially conflict with each other. And I don't know any more details on that than that. Have you, has the ad hoc committee had a presentation on that yet?
I, I don't know whether they have or haven't.
Yeah.
But I, I think you hit the nail on the head. I think concurrent processes are simply a waste of time, and I, you know, we have experts on the Shelter Committee. I think it's prudent to let the Shelter Committee come back with recommendations, and then for the council to then deliberate and take action at that point. And I'm just concerned that discussions, you know, discussions about ordinances and restrictions and so on and so forth before the Shelter Committee has even come back with a recommendation is just, you know, we're not, are just a little premature, and not in the best interests of our community, or the council for that matter. One of the reasons for the moratorium was simply time to, to ensure that we make the best decision possible, and I don't think we should be rushing to a, to a decision without hearing back from the Shelter Committee. In fact, I just spoke with the co-chair, one of the co-chairs this afternoon, and I think, you know, licensing and restrictions is going to be one of the agenda items. I think they have already looked at it, and I, I think they'll be, they'll be covering it in the meeting and then making a recommendation on that to the council.
Counselor LaChapelle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. We made a pledge to move fast and move forward. We gave 180 days. If we postpone things, my concern is that we go past that 180 days. So I wanted to make sure that we had something done within those 180 days. If you're suggesting that we add more time, then we can extend the moratorium and get another 180 days, and we can take all the time we need. But if we want to do it in that, that time period, I suggest that we move forward this way. I'm all in favor of holding everything off, extending the moratorium if you'd prefer, and take our time to look at it as carefully as possible. So it's one or the other. Either we move forward, I like the information that you presented us, thank you. So I'm open to hearing the shelters' reports, not a problem, but there's a timeline, and if it goes beyond that timeline, then we have to extend the moratorium. So it's, it's one or the other. What would you prefer, Mr. Mayor?
I think it's, we're meeting with the Shelter Committee in July 19th for an update, is that correct?
That's correct. It's that the workshop session is strictly on the shelter situation.
Excellent. I think it will be important for the council to hear from the Shelter Committee at that time and then, and then go from there. That's what I recommend.
So we're starting to move forward.
Counselor McCarthy.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that it behooves us to have the council continue with, and the administration continue with the tracked, double track. Give it, it gives two different aspects to looking at this situation, and, you know, we're a pretty, pretty bright crew up here, and we can handle some of it. We're not going to formulate the final product without input and advice of the ad hoc committee, but I think we can do a lot on our own without slowing things down or screwing things up. And I, and I agree with Counselor LaChapelle that, you know, my feeling, and I mentioned it all along, was that the moratorium was 180 days, and I wanted to try to do it before 180 days. It looks like it's going to get stretched out to the end, but the last thing I want to do is go beyond that 180 days, because I said I was going to do it in that time. So to do it in that time, I think we need to have the double track going forward. Thank you.
Counselor Clement.
To your point, Mr. Mayor, I didn't hear anybody up here indicate that we were going to move ahead without the committee. I think right along, the majority of the council has wanted to hear everything we could get for information, and I certainly think that's where we should be headed. I don't think we can have too much information on this. I was listening today to an interesting talk show on the radio concerning the city of Portland, their homeless and refugee problem. They are anticipating a 5.4% increase in the property tax just to deal with homeless issues. And they're, they're saying this is not sustainable, what are we going to do? Well, they want the state to chip in, they want everybody to help them out. You know, I just don't want to see us heading in that same direction. I think we would be well advised to get all the information we can get from whatever sources out there. You keep referring to the committee staffed with experts, there are other experts out there, there are other municipalities around there that have dealt with these problems. I think we need to get all the information we can get, and I'm all in favor of that. Thank you.
Personally, I feel like gathering information is good. I don't really feel like it would be a productive use of the council's time for us to start developing an ordinance on our own. I mean, I don't know that much about shelters, I'm learning some as a member of the ad hoc committee. I feel like if we go ahead with something on our own, then we're not going to necessarily come out with the best outcome. And I just feel like we need to get most of that input from the ad hoc committee, because they are, they are the resident experts on the topic, and I feel like their, their expertise is valuable and should be considered by us. So I, I mean, gathering information's good, I'm not sure what we're going to get out of starting to create an ordinance on our own. I just don't know how productive that will be. Thanks.
Counselor LaChapelle.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So just to make it clear, I think you, you know, we've done it before, we'll show a hands type thing. We are going to continue moving forward the path that you were looking at, and are you going to send out this questionnaire to the counselors?
I can do that, and I can also loop the chairs of the ad hoc committee in there.
That would be wonderful.
And I think that's a good compromise.
Okay. That'd be wonderful.
Yep.
Just get the, get the feedback from the counselors, what we're thinking, and we can continue moving forward, so we're not just caught at the last minute, everybody running, so.
Okay. That sounds good. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Administrator Hunter, may I have the time, please?
Tracy, what time does your...
6:50.
Yeah, because I, my watch is fast, that's why.
We're going to start in, in a few minutes. Thank you.
Take care.
I'm talking about the council meeting?
Yes.[1089.63]
Hello, I am calling this meeting to order. We will begin with the pledge and we will be led by Madam Clerk.
The place of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we will begin with a short presentation here. Hello. We're on, there we go, okay. So, we are recognizing our clerk, Kathy Montello, and here we go. So, a few, there's a few things we're doing here, but a few facts about our Madam Clerk. She started working for the city of Lewiston in January 1999. She is a Master Municipal Clerk, which is the international credential within her field, the highest certification. She is also Maine's Local Election Administrator Representative, did I say that right? To the Federal U.S. Elections Assistance Commission Standards Board. She holds her lifetime certification as a Certified Clerk of Maine and is past State President of the Maine Town and Clerks Association, for which she has also served for over 25 years as an instructor for workshops on election administration, municipal law, business licensing, parliamentary procedure, and more. And she was Maine's Municipal Clerk of the Year in 2000. She's very famous. The Maine, and she has a recent appointment here. The Maine Town and Clerk City Association nominated her for the position of the Region One Director for the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, which represents Maine, New Hampshire, Vermont, Massachusetts, Connecticut, Rhode Island, and New York. And then, following her nomination, she submitted an application and she was ultimately selected. And you were just sworn in, uh...
Two weeks ago.
Two weeks ago, well, there we go. So, that's what Dottie wrote with your assistance, but now I have something. And then, we have a presentation here. Madam Clerk, I'm so proud of you and your appointment. You have served your city with distinction, and I am proud that your peers recognize your expertise as well. You know, I've never been mayor before, and where does one go for training for that? I'll tell you where you go, you go see the city clerk. Madam Clerk has been, you have been incredibly gracious with your time, and you've answered my countless questions. Your guidance and input has been invaluable, and the only reason I have done anything right. Thank you for everything you have done for our city and everything you have done for me. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
And we have a certificate that I will read and then we'll get a photo. This certificate is in recognition, is presented, this certificate of recognition is presented to Kathleen Montello in celebration of her May 25, 2022, appointment as Region One Director for the International Institute of Municipal Clerks, which encompasses Maine, New Hampshire, Vermont, Massachusetts, Connecticut, Rhode Island, and New York. Your professionalism and expertise will be a tremendous asset to this position, as evidenced by your continued exemplary service as Lewiston City Clerk. You will also be a positive reflection of the city of Lewiston as you represent your designated IIMC region. The city of Lewiston considers you a stellar ambassador within the professional municipal clerk profession, and extends best wishes upon your three-year term as Region One Director. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Before we kick things off, I wanted to call your attention. Summer is back here for Lewiston, we have a full slate of events going, and we have a calendar here. And apparently, these were so popular, I learned from our administrator that we no longer really have them. However, we did have a stack in my office, and Misty Parker has some, so if anyone present would like one, you can pick one up from Misty. And then, you can also visit this on our website, lewistonmain.gov/eventsinlew. And there we go, I hope to see everyone at an event this summer, starting with the River Fest in a week. There we go, with the rigata. Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Our roll call votes for this meeting will begin with the Counselor of Ward Five. We will also note for the record that the Counselor from Ward One, Counselor Scott, has an excused absence this meeting, and that also means, Mr. Mayor, that under their charter, you have the ability to cast a vote, should you wish.
And may I have a motion to accept the minutes? Counselor LaChapelle, followed by Counselor Peace.
All set for a vote?
Yes.
Counselor from Ward Five?
Yes.
Ward Six?
Yes.
Ward Seven?
Yes.
Ward Two?
Yes.
Ward Three?
Yes.
Ward Four?
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Question passed by vote of seven to zero.
We now are, time for public comment. Any member of the public may make comments regarding issues pertaining to Lewiston City Government. This period is reserved for non-agenda items. Public comment is also allowed during individual agenda items. Public comment is limited to three minutes per person. Please state your name for the record, and please indicate if you are a Lewiston resident. Because this is the business meeting of the City Council, all questions should be directed to the mayor, who will ask staff to follow up at a future time. It is illegal for the City Council to allow comments related to personnel matters. All personnel complaints should be made directly to the City Administration Office.
Okay, good evening, my name is Ronnie Parity, Ward Six. I'm here to give a message from my late husband. And some of you know my late husband, some of the staff worked with him. He was on the City Council for six years, he was on the planning board for five years, he was on the Finance Committee. My husband, I'm worried about what's been going on in this city and what I've seen in meetings, council meetings. I'm really, really disappointed in some people. But we're divided in the city. My husband never talked about anybody in public when he was on council. If he disagreed with staff, and you can ask Link, you can ask Kathy, you can ask other...
Excuse me, can you please speak into the mic?
You want my voice louder? I'm sorry, I got a loud voice, Kyle, so...
Thank you.
I can talk without the mic. I have Kathy Heather...
It's for our audience at home, thank you.
Kathy Heather, Lincoln David, know what he used to do. Thanks, Heather. He used to go behind closed doors when he disagreed with somebody on the council, or when he disagreed with the mayor, or when he disagreed with staff. He did not make fun of them, he did not go out in public, he did not use social media, he did not use the newspaper to put somebody down. I'm asking you to go back to what my husband used to do. He used to go, and again, you can ask the staff that are still here and worked with him. He never downed staff. He never downed his fellow counselors, even when he disagreed with them. You didn't know what he thought. I think we need to go back to that. There's too much division in this city. This city is divided by the people. And if we don't stop using social media, newspaper, and other things to put people down, this is wrong. If you have something to say to somebody, say it to their face and go behind closed doors. If you don't dare to do that, then don't say anything at all. Thank you. And please remember Mark W. Parity, his park is down there. He had a lesson, and he gave it. Yeah, Rick knows him and everything, and the staff that were here. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment?
Luke Jensen, Ward Five. I love the Freedom of Access Act here in Maine. It gives me rights as a resident of Maine. I get to see the public meetings that elected officials are in, I get to witness how they make their decisions, and I get to, you know, essentially be a part of that process of allowing to speak up to. So, it's important to me. It gives me rights as a citizen. I get to know what my elected officials are up to. The Freedom of Access Act is very, very explicit that clandestine meetings should not be happening. If communication is going on between counselors, it's okay to organize, like, when you're gonna have a vote, like, planning that kind of things, but when you're talking about substantive issues and how you're going to vote, that is explicitly banned by the FOAA, which I know you guys all know, because you do the training. The training is to look at the Freedom of Access website page, just the question and answer page, it's very simple. It's a quick read, too, then you sign a paper saying you've not only read it, but that you understand it. So, that law was clearly violated by the City Council, and I am still waiting on something that's gonna happen. To me, it doesn't seem like anything's happened, and I need to have faith in this city moving forward. How can we expect to clean up the downtown when elected officials aren't held accountable? How can we solve the partying of bait students? How are we gonna hold them accountable if elected officials won't even follow the law? So, I guess I'm here to just express a lot of disappointment. Just really disappointing, it is really disappointing to see at the end of the last regular meeting, four members kind of give statements, passing blame to other people with unfounded accusations. They sent me the evidence, I haven't seen anything. And to just not take responsibilities is just, it's very unfortunate. It's like if someone's walking their dog, and then, like, you saw out the window, and they let the dog go to the bathroom on your lawn, then they were going to walk away, and you get out and like, hey, you gotta take care of that. And for them to look you flat in your eyes and tell you, I didn't do anything wrong, I didn't do anything unethical, I didn't do anything illegal, and then to just walk away, do you wanna live in that world? I don't. That is a problem. So, again, I know, I guess just disappointment as a resident. I mean, there's stuff going on behind the scenes, we're not seeing how you guys are making your decisions. Even if changes are made now, unless there's any kind of accountability, it's hard to have faith in elected officials right now here in the city. And so, I don't know, just very disappointed. And I truly hope that something's gonna happen here soon, I hope that people are gonna be held accountable, I hope that people hold themselves accountable. We can't live in a world where people aren't held accountable. I don't have anything else to say, I'm just really disappointed.
Thank you. Further public comment?
Hi, I'm Steve Morgan, I live 260 South Avenue in Lewiston. What I'm here to talk to you about, thank you all for serving, I know it's a great job, and you get paid really well, and I appreciate all you do for the city. I'm here to talk about insurance. We all have it, we have car insurance, or boat insurance, or homeowner's insurance, or health insurance, or whatever it may be, and we hope we don't have to use it. That's the cool thing about it. It's weird, we spend money out of our wallet every single week, hoping we don't use it. So, I'm here to talk to you about another insurance on, and I pray to God we never have to use it. But on May 24th, in Alvaldi, Texas, there was 19 kids and two teachers shot and killed. I'm pro-gun. I believe, and I have a handgun, sits in the dresser next to me. I hunt, and I think that's great. I'm not pro-AR assault rifle, although I see in other countries, police use it, and I would have no problem police using them in this country. It's a big problem, and it's nothing that we're gonna solve here tonight with Lewiston City Council, you're saying, why did he even bring it up, then? Well, let me tell you. In guns in 2020 were the leading cause of kids' deaths. So far this year, there's been 213 mass shootings in the United States, and 27 of which were at schools. This is from the Gun Violence Archive in Boston Globe. My brother and I talk every night, usually it's about how bad the Red Sox are doing, or how great the Celtics are doing, or something like that. But that night, we talked for over an hour just about that event and what could take place. So, my thought is that, I think we've got seven schools, if I counted correctly, in Lewiston. I Googled it real quick, I mean, I didn't put a lot of thought or energy at time, and maybe we could do better, or maybe we could do worse, but just real quick, to get a metal detector in a school, costs about $4,000. So, if you've got seven schools, that's $28,000. And maybe that didn't include installation costs and stuff, maybe it's $50,000. But I could name 10 people off the top of my head that would throw $4,000, including myself, onto the table right now to buy a metal detector for every school in here. Right now, there's, I believe, one or two police officers in the high school. They're talking about adding two, they call them SROs, and they build rapport with kids and things like that. I think that's money well spent, and I think that we should have two police officers in all the schools. Now, hopefully, they never have to do anything, but hopefully, they build a rapport with kids. Those kids in that school that were under fire, those 10-year-olds, some of them were calling 911 and saying, please send in the police. And it's sad that it just didn't happen the way it should have, and that's another topic completely. I noticed in this morning's paper, they have active threat training, getting ready to go to all the staff at Lewiston High School, and I think that's tremendous. I used to be on the board of a hospital in Massachusetts, Asher-Ness Hospital, and they have that right there at the hospital on a regular basis. The cost of a couple officers, I don't know, $150,000 for two officers, and then you multiply that. Where's the money come from? I don't know, if we can spend, send $40 billion to Ukraine, I think we could protect our own children.
We're at time, sir, if you can please wrap up, that would be great.
I'd like to see the City Council and the School Committee talk about this further, maybe form a committee, and maybe form a committee and talk about it, and so that we're not talking about it three months from now, when another one happens, or 12 months from now, or, God forbid, 10 years from now, or whatever. I'd just like to see somebody talk about it and do something about it. Thank you.
Thank you. Further public comment?
Thank you, Melissa.
Thank you. Social distance, but not social distance. My name is Melissa Dunn, I live at 254 Blake Street in Lewiston. And I just wanna say that what I'm gonna talk about may be content and trigger warning involving domestic and sexual violence, so I urge people to limit exposure for self-care. I tried to report my offender to the Lewiston Police Department because of concerns of threats of mass shootings, threats of serial killing, violence towards women and girls, or my homicide. I was targeted by this person, I was asked in the beginning, I asked them in the beginning if they were a copper supremacist, terrorized daily, threatened to be killed repeatedly. I left them when they acknowledged they had me in proximity to actual and actively engaging in recruiting supremacists, even some local to Lewiston. Since my engagement with Lewiston Police and every interaction I've had, to relive my terrorizing experience due to an abusive tactic they use called countering. Countering is a tactic used by abusers to confuse, manipulate, and disorient their victims by disrupting and chronically opposing their experiences. Instead of focusing on the facts of why I was harmed the way I was, or by who, or what happened, I was laughed at, mocked, taunted, terrorized, and forced to relive my traumatic experiences. I could not speak about, nor report, what happened to me without countering being used. I repeatedly asked them why they were treating me the way they were and not being trauma-informed. I fear for survivors and community, especially those who choose to seek justice through the system. Professionals cannot separate bias and prejudice onto a survivor's experience. It's not the person for the job, and shows that they are inept with working with a population who is experiencing or could be trauma cycle, hypervigilance, survival crisis, and the repercussions of what severe trauma brings to the mind and body. Whether people in the institution believe survivors identify more with the offender, align in politics, countering is a continuation of violence a survivor has experienced. If professionals are feeling some kind of way, of something that I'm saying about my experience and taking personal offense, they're not hearing critical pieces of information and carrying out that continuation of abuse. It should not be carried out by acting agents of oppression within the Lewiston Police Department. I'm asking people for an accountability process for those who use countering tactics, because abuse has no place in trauma-informed work with survivors of violence. I'm here today to beg the city of Lewiston to ban abusive tactics like countering from being used in investigations, from speaking with survivors of violence, and for the love of God, get trauma-informed people in place at the LPD now, not ones who say they're with certification, but with extensive trauma-informed training through a race and class lens. Thank you.
Administrator Hunter, would you please follow up on this?
Will do.
Thank you. Further public comment? Madam Clerk, I understand we have a consent agenda.
We do, we, excuse me, we have two items on the consent agenda this evening. Item number one, authorization to accept transfer of forfeiture funds. And item number two, recommendation from the city clerk registrar voters on actions necessary to conduct the state candidate primary election to be held on Tuesday, June 14th, 2022.
May I have a motion?
Motion for passage.
Counselor Clement, followed by Counselor Peace. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward Five?
Yes.
Ward Six?
Yes.
Ward Seven?
Yes.
Ward One? I'm sorry, Ward Two, sorry.
Yes.
Ward Three?
Yes.
Ward Four?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Question passed by vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number three.
Item number three, public hearing on applications for a new liquor license and special amusement permit for live entertainment for the Ramada Lewiston Hotel and Conference Center, 490 Pleasant Street. Requested action to authorize the city clerk's office to approve a new liquor license application and special amusement permit for the Lewiston, for the Ramada Lewiston Hotel and Conference Center, 490 Pleasant Street.
So moved.
May I have, yes, Counselor Jalinas? Counselor Clement? Discussion from the council? Counselor Peace?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is this a renewal or a new license?
Sure, it's actually a new license, Counselor, because there's new ownership. Anytime there's a new owner of a business, they need to renew the license, and that's what is before you this evening.
Is this new owner of the premises, or a new owner operating the lounge, or whatever you want?
I believe it's both, I believe the owner, the new owner purchased the property and purchased the business as well.
The only other question I have, is there gonna be anybody on premises all the time that's responsible for this?
I don't know, like, are they gonna have a manager 24/7 on the property, is that your question? I'm not sure, that is not a question that is asked in the liquor license, so I don't know that for sure. We're not licensing the hotel, what is before you is approval of their state liquor license only.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Public comment on this chinned item? Back to the council? Oh, sorry? Please, please, please come up to the podium and state your name if you're a resident of Lewiston, please.
My name is Alex Parker, I'm a resident of Lewiston. I'm the attorney who's representing an LLC who is under contract to buy the real estate in the business, so a transfer of ownership has not happened yet. A contract has been signed, hasn't closed, and my client is the buyer, and in order to operate the hotel as it's been running, they're filing their applications for the liquor permit, and that's what the application is for. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Further public comment? Back to the council? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Ward Five?
Yes.
Ward Six?
Yes.
Ward Seven?
Yes.
Ward Two?
Yes.
Ward Three?
Yes.
Ward Four?
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Question passed by vote of seven to zero.
Item number four.
Item number four, public hearing on applications for a new liquor license and special amusement permit for live entertainment for DON Soul Food Kitchen LLC, 37 Park Street. Requested action to authorize the city clerk's office to approve a new liquor license application and special amusement permit for DON Soul Food Kitchen LLC, 37 Park Street.
May I have a motion? Counselor LaChapelle, followed by Counselor McCarthy. Discussion? Counselor Peace?
Now, is this, from what I understand, is this is on the second floor?
where it should be. And we're just excited to get started and move forward with it, so.
Thank you. Further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Item number five.
Item number five, public hearing for approval of an outdoor entertainment permit for the Pine Street Block Party and request for waiver of city fees for event. There are two items for requested action. The first item is to review the requests submitted by Community Credit Union for a waiver of fees for the Pine Street Block Party and to determine a course of action.
So moved.
Yes, Counselor Harriman, Counselor McCarthy. Seconded. Discussion at the council level. Counselor LaChapelle?
What is the amount of the fees?
The total in-kind service is $606.
Okay, so it's...
It's like other events that we had vacillated over through the budget process. Unfortunately, that didn't quite make it in with the budget process for consideration, so we're bringing it before you tonight.
Thank you.
Counselor Jolinas?
I'd just say I'm really happy to support this. I mean, I feel like the Community Credit Union has been such a generous, generous entity in our community, and to see them doing an event with this magnitude, I mean, just the importance of this, what's going on behind this, so thank you for that.
Public comment?
Good evening. I'm Jen Hogan. I'm the president and CEO at Community Credit Union at 144 Pine Street. I'd like to thank the city council for your consideration this evening in both accepting our permit as well as waiving fees. This is an event that we held in 2019. It is extremely successful. It was really brought the neighborhood together, which was exciting. I do want to acknowledge that we are coming late in the budget season, and I apologize for that. There's a couple of reasons for that. First, we were waiting to see what happened with COVID, as everybody is. And second, probably the only challenge that we had at the event in 2019 was moving the barriers for school buses to get through to drop kids off safely, so we intentionally waited for the school calendar to come out so that we could plan it on an early release day. So that was intentional, to plan it on a Wednesday, when the students would be dropped off for a half day, so we can avoid any types of challenges with that. I also do want to note that this is a collaboration, so it's not just Community Credit Union. It's also a webs market. Susan's here with me this evening, this evening, excuse me. Also Lewiston Summer Funds and Films, so Joe Philopon is involved, and Healthy Neighborhoods, and we hope to have the city's support as well. So, thank you.
Further public comment? Back to the council? Counselor McCarthy?
I think stuff like this is excellent. It brings the community together. It gives people an opportunity to have fun with their neighbors and that, and I'm all for it, and I'd like to see more of this downtown, or actually anyplace in the city. But yes, I think it's a great idea. Thank you.
Will there be a dunk tank?
It was last time, so we'll have to get on the mayor.
I was thinking about the president and CEO of the credit union. Further discussion from the council?
Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one?
I'm sorry, word two? Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero. The next item is to conduct a public hearing on an application from Community Credit Union for outdoor musical concerts to be held on Pine Street and the surrounding area on September 21st as part of the Pine Street Block Party, and to authorize a permit for an outdoor entertainment event as required by the City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 10, Article 1, Section 10-3, to the event organizers for the outdoor music concerts contingent upon positive recommendations from the Police Department, Fire Department, Code Land Use Officer, and Code Health Officer regarding compliance with all regulations and compliance with all city ordinances.
May I have a motion? Counselor Jolinas, seconded by Counselor Peace. Discussion? Public comment? Back to the council? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word one? I'm sorry, word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Agenda item number six.
Item number six, public hearing in final passage for amendments to the solid waste ordinance regarding the EZ Pass program and spring cleanup program. Requested action that the proposed amendments to the City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 62, Solid Waste, Article 1 in general, and Article 3 hazardous materials, receive final passage by a roll call vote.
May I have a motion?
So moved. Passage.
Counselor LaChapelle, seconded by Counselor Clement. Director Brunchek, is there anything you'd like to say? No, I guess not. Administrator Hunter?
No, it's the final reading for this. This has been presented before council.
Discussion at the council? Counselor Peace?
I just have one question, Marion, the director. I understand that when you bring metal down to the recycle, there's no charge.
There is not. It's considered recycling.
Okay. How is that going to go through with your EZ Pass?
Good question. I just asked that yesterday. So there'll be a, the one path that you can do right now, you go off to the right through the parking lot for your recycling, the new compost program, and the metals. So most loads come in as a mixed load, so that's why you have an attendant there that would either discount your load or separate it out with you. But for the most part, people realize recycling is including metals, so for those who don't, great question.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion? Public comment? Back to the council? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero. The next item is to conduct a public hearing on an application from Community Credit Union for outdoor musical concerts to be held on Pine Street and the surrounding area on September 21st as part of the Pine Street Block Party, and to authorize a permit for an outdoor entertainment event as required by the City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 10, Article 1, Section 10-3, to the event organizers for the outdoor music concerts contingent upon positive recommendations from the Police Department, Fire Department, Code Land Use Officer, and Code Health Officer regarding compliance with all regulations and compliance with all city ordinances.
May I have a motion? Counselor Jolinas, seconded by Counselor Peace. Discussion? Public comment? Back to the council? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number seven.
Item number seven, public hearing in final passage to amend the administrative ordinance to establish the Lewiston Public Art Committee as a standing city committee. Requested action that the proposed amendments to the City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 62, Solid Waste, Article 1 in general, and Article 3 hazardous materials, receive final passage by a roll call vote.
May I have a motion?
So moved. Passage.
Counselor LaChapelle, seconded by Counselor Clement. Director Brunchek, is there anything you'd like to say? No, I guess not. Administrator Hunter?
No, it's the final reading for this. This has been presented before council.
Discussion at the council? Counselor Peace?
I just have one question, Marion, the director. I understand that when you bring metal down to the recycle, there's no charge.
There is not. It's considered recycling.
Okay. How is that going to go through with your EZ Pass?
Good question. I just asked that yesterday. So there'll be a, the one path that you can do right now, you go off to the right through the parking lot for your recycling, the new compost program, and the metals. So most loads come in as a mixed load, so that's why you have an attendant there that would either discount your load or separate it out with you. But for the most part, people realize recycling is including metals, so for those who don't, great question.
Okay, thank you. Further discussion? Public comment? Back to the council? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number seven.
Item number seven, public hearing in final passage to amend the administrative ordinance to establish the Lewiston Public Art Committee as a standing city committee. Requested action that the proposed amendments to the City Code of Ordinances, Chapter 2, Administration, Article 4, Boards, Commissions, Committees, and Bureaus, Division 4, Lewiston Public Art Committee, receive final passage by a roll call vote.
May I have a motion?
Second.
Counselor Peace, followed by Counselor Jolinas. Discussion? Public comment? Back to the council? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number nine.
Item number nine, public hearing in final passage to amend the land use code and map to add a contract zone overlay to the downtown residential zoning district for Site 2 of the Choice Neighborhood Transformation Plan for properties located along Bartlett Street, Walnut Street, Pier Street, and Pine Street. Requested action that the proposed amendment to the zoning and land use code and map to add a contract zone overlay to the downtown residential district for Site 2 of the Choice Neighborhood Transformation Plan receive final passage by a roll call vote.
So moved. Counselor McCarthy, followed by Counselor Peace. Discussion? Anything from Assistant Director Parker or Catherine? Public comment on this agenda item? Back to the council? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from word five?
Yes.
Word six?
Yes.
Word seven?
Yes.
Word two?
Yes.
Word three?
Yes.
Word four?
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number 10.
Item number 10, public hearing in first passage to amend the zoning and land use code for the purposes of corrections, clarifications, and changes for definitions, administration, and enforcement, appeals and variances, district regulations, performance standards, development review and standards, and significant buildings and standards. Requested action that the proposed amendments to Appendix A, Article 2, definitions, Article 5, administration and enforcement, Article 9, appeals and variances, Article 11, district regulations, Article 12, performance standards, Article 13, development review and standards, and Article 15, significant buildings and districts of the city zoning and land use code, for the purposes of corrections, clarifications, and changes to these sections, receive first passage by a roll call vote, and that the public hearing on said ordinance amendments be continued to the next regularly scheduled city council meeting.
May I have a motion? Counselor Peace, seconded by Counselor LaChapelle. Director Heidegger, do you want to kick this off?
Sure. That was a mouthful that Kathy gave you. I can go into great detail if you folks have questions, but as Kathy mentioned, a lot of this is housekeeping. Some of these things are also more significant changes in the sense that they've been things that we've been thinking or talking about for some time, and we finally picked a way at them. I guess if there's a couple that I would just bring to your attention that are maybe kind of feel-good type things, I certainly know Counselor LaChapelle got excited a little bit when I hinted at one of the changes last week, but we've made a change in here with respect to accessory structures, with respect to sheds. Currently, you're supposed to get a permit for a shed right now, but that's really driven by the zoning and land use code. It's not driven by the building code. The building inspector brought to my attention that, you know, we don't really need permits for certain-sized structures of 200 square feet or less, so if you want to put a, if you want to put up a shed in Lewiston for residential purposes, and it's less than 200 square feet, and you keep it five feet from the property line, you're all set. You don't need a permit. It's 125 square feet for non-residential projects, so that's, I think, a win and something that people will appreciate. Another bigger change in here is with respect to the frontage right-of-way provisions. Frontage right-of-way provisions are basically like a backlot provision that allows for residential development to occur behind an existing development. It's an alternative to having to build out a city street. It's currently limited to two houses. We've been talking about some time about expanding the number of houses that could build off of this frontage right-of-way as a cheaper-all term to building a city street or a private road. Right now, to build a city street or a private road at the same standards is really expensive. development to occur behind an existing development. It's an alternative to having to build out a city street. It's currently limited to two houses. We've been talking about sometime about expanding the number of houses that could build off of this frontage right-of-way as a cheaper all term to building a city street or a private road. Right now, to build a city street or a private road at the same standards is really expensive. So you'll see in here, it's in Article Twelve, Section Ten, a whole new, it's a lot of it's the same language, but then there's a whole new table in here that expands it to up to six houses that could be built off this backlot frontage right-of-way provision. And as you increase the number of houses, the performance standards or the design standards change with that as well. We worked with Public Works and the Police Department to make sure everybody was comfortable with what those standards are. So again, it gives property owners another alternative to develop their land with more homes. The other side of that, too, is we have expanded it to include non-residential uses. So originally, it was limited to single-family homes, but if you want to do this for commercial development now, you could have up to two lots get frontage or a backlot provision off this frontage right-of-way. So you don't have to build out a city street. So again, it's another alternative to encourage some development without having to experience the cost of a city street or a private road. There's some housekeeping things in here with respect to sign ordinance to make it consistent with state law. And then I guess the other, you know, feel-good provision in here would be significant buildings in historic district. Basically, our historic preservation guidelines. We've been working with the Historic Preservation Review Board over several months. Doug Green provides staff assistance to that board. We've been talking a while about how can we approve signs without having to go to the Historic Preservation Review Committee every time. Every time you have a historic structure and you need a sign, want to pop a new sign, you're supposed to get a certificate of appropriateness from the Historic Preservation Review Board. They only meet once a month. How can we speed that up? So we've worked with the board to get language in there that basically gives staff the ability to issue that certificate of appropriateness for a sign on a historic structure. There are other changes in here that I can go into if you guys have questions.
Discussion from the council. Counselor Peace?
Thank you. My question is the repainting of, or repair of historic painted signs. One that always comes up is the one on Lisbon Street, the Misco sign. One part of this says, "Do it." The other part says, "If there's a logo, you're showing it's a business, you can." So how does that work?
Yeah, I mean, that doesn't exist anymore, right? It's not, I don't think we can buy Unnead of Biscuits any longer. Maybe you can, I'm not aware of that. But we've talked with Historic Preservation before, both the state and the local board about trying to preserve those types of signs. There's a similar faded sign on the side of the Grand Trunk Depot as well with all the towns on it and whatnot. And absolutely, we're encouraging that if somebody wants to, you know, repaint those, resurface those, have at it. This would allow you to go through that process without having to get, excuse me, without having to have a meeting before the Historic Preservation Review Board. We do need to provide them an update so they know, you know, keep us accountable as to what we've signed off on and what we've approved, but it'll speed up the process as far as allowing people to do things like that.
Will you need a written release from the property owner?
No. You'll need to, you'll need to still provide us an application showing us like who owns the property and whatnot, but as far as a written release, not necessarily. I mean, it's just, it's a simple application. We've actually, that's in here, too, as far as what we've changed to make it clear as to what's necessary for an application. It references owner's name, the contact information, deed to the property, so we know that you actually own the property. If you don't own the property, a letter that says, "Hey, I have that property owner's permission to do something to it," and then a quick narrative explaining what it is that you're looking to do as well as a sketch of what's going to be done out there. So in that case, they would probably provide us pictures of what's out there, explain to us how they're going to resurface it. There's some criteria in here that talks about the color and the materials. So we make sure that it is something consistent with what's there.
Yeah, because that's visible from Lisbon Street. You're coming down Lisbon, stands right up in front of you, so.
Yeah.
Because I'd like to see that get done over. Preserve. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Counselor LaChapelle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Director Hediger, so this is easing some of the restrictions or clarifying our code ordinance? Are we dropping regulations?
Well, for example, the accessory structures, that's
Correct.
A dropped regulation, right? Before, we required people to get permits for accessory structures for sheds. You don't have to get a permit anymore, so that's a lesser restriction. If you wanted to do more than two houses, you had to do it on a city street or private road. Now you can do it on a frontage right-of-way, which is a much lower threshold as far as development goes. Same with commercial activity. You couldn't even do it before on a frontage right-of-way. Now we're offering that as an option.
So how many codes did we eliminate?
We didn't eliminate anything. We changed some language here to make it easier for people to do development.
You're making it tough for a salesman, sir. So.
I'm not in sales, I'm sorry.
Obviously. It's painfully evident. Okay, it's, I'm just, it's about blessed time that we start addressing these code issues. Great job. I look forward to continued changes in code. The one question I have, is chickens involved in this code thing right now?
No. And the change you have before you tonight? No.
Not yet, okay, I'm just checking.
Just quickly, with respect to chickens, I do believe the council asked last time that we needed to get some public input into that process. So I'll be working with Dottie to do some type of blast or something like that to get some input, basically explaining what exists, what the council is kind of thinking about. We'll get some feedback, and I'll come back to you folks with the report.
I appreciate the council's concern with chickens and your attention to this matter, but I would like to keep this conversation on the agenda item, please.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Further questions from the council? Public comment on this agenda item? Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
Word Two?
Yes.
Word Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Agenda item number eleven.
Agenda item number eleven. Public hearing and adoption of the fiscal year 2023 Lewiston Capital Improvement Program Bond Issue Order. Requested action to hold a public hearing and adopt the fiscal year 2023 Lewiston Capital Improvement Bond Issue Order authorizing the issuance of $19,398 and, I'm sorry, $19,398,925 in fiscal year 2023, public improvement bonds and making an appropriation for certain capital projects.
May I have a motion? Counselor Herman followed by Counselor Peace. Discussion? Counselor McCarthy?
I get to be the bad guy tonight. Yeah, like I voiced at the last council meeting on this, I'm deeply concerned about the amount that we're going over, the stated 80% of what's being retired. There's a couple of things. This is the second year in a row that we're going over the 100%. Am I correct on that?
Yes, it's the second year in a row.
Okay, and I think it was at, what, 167%? Is that the, what you had put out the last time?
As far as the coverage, yes.
Okay. And that concerns me. To me, it doesn't even take into consideration that limit at all, and that concerns me. Of course, this is late in the game. This is my first year in getting the learning curve on how to do things in the appropriate timeframe. So this is last minute, but I'm extremely concerned about the amount that it's over. I know I had voiced my, at this late date, it was hard to dissect everything and cut and slash and make any sense of what's going on. And I appreciate your, I appreciate the position that you're in. My only suggestion that come off the top would be to have the school department fund that hundred, that million dollars out of their fund balance. I think the city funded a bunch of their LCIPs through our fund balance, and I think that they could fund theirs. I understand it may impact next year's budget session, but next year is next year. I just think it would get it down to be a little more reasonable and a little closer to the spirit of the ordinance that was passed. My other thing was, if I remember right, Administrator Hunter, didn't you say that the amount of bonding that we have now is above the level that is liked or what bonding agents, agencies would want the city to be at as far as the level?
Administrator Hunter?
Certainly. If I could, just to kind of cover a couple of your questions. First of all, just as a reminder, back in 2009, the council elected the first debt limitation. That was at the 97%. They dropped it in 2011 to the 80%. Since that time, there have been 13 chances of adhering to the debt limit. We've only missed the limit five of those 13 times. One is with the Lewiston Middle School addition and McMahon expansion. The other is the Lewiston High School classroom ring. We had the extensive middle school HVAC system replacement in the prior year. And then the significant project that is driving this, that is probably not routine in nature, is the infrastructure improvement and building improvement at the armory as well in conjunction with a fire substation. So those two hand in hand. Although there is concern, to your point, with the rating agency, the city gets rated by Standard and Poor's. The rating agency in this particular category has deemed us to be elevated but acceptable. We have been able to mitigate the ranking, if you will, or the scoring based upon other mitigating factors, including the rapid payoff that we use, as well as the refunding that we've been able to do throughout, you know, through several years. So those two pieces have mitigate, made it, mitigated that. I think the piece that we need to keep in mind is the fire substations and particularly the armory are very ancient buildings, you know, from looking at the whole scheme of things on what we issue debt for. I think at this juncture, large investments have not been made in those two particular areas. But the good thing is, once the investment, it's expensive, no doubt about it, but once the investment is made, it's not a re-incurring investment. It's not like streets and sidewalks that you have to contribute a large amount of money each year in order to maintain the entire system. Once those buildings are replaced and/or upgraded, we're going to be good there for a while. And I think that piece, unfortunately, they're all kind of coming together. To your point with the removal of the school projects into fund balance, there's pros and cons to that. The school projects total $1,070,000, so that would erode their fund balance in order to balance the budget or at least mitigate some of the increases in future years on the tax rate. It's also been council's desire to look at that, to try to save some of this money as we're nudging up close to that revaluation time period, to keep that desirable tax rate below $30 in order, and in the year of the revow, to hold the overall budget constant so the taxpayers are only seeing the impact of the revaluation and that shift from commercial to residential that you're going to experience. If we start using some of that money now, we lose some of our ability to do that in the future. So that would be, you know, the council oversight. Even removing that, we are still going to be exceeding, granted, you're closer, but we are still going to be exceeding the 80%. At this time period, based upon the crystal balls that we're seeing and the increases in the Federal Reserve rates and so forth, buying power now and interest rates now make much more sense than deferring this in the future. And if anything, it's something to look at potentially for the next LCIP and decide, based upon market rates at that point in time, do we want to move forward with some of those projects? And that may be the year to send direction out saying, "We want to get under the $10 million mark." From a bond standpoint, anything under $10 million is kind of the sweet spot because we don't have to do as much due diligence. And you get very, very competitive rates when you issue less than that. Our bond packaging being what it is, we typically average between 12 and 22 million dollars a year when we sell.
The bonds that would be issued for this, when would they be issued?
We are actually looking at it now that our new finance director, Tracy Roy, is on board with us. Normally, we were going to defer that until the February-March timeframe. We are looking at actually costing it out and accelerating and potentially selling two years at the same time to see what we can capture for a rate.
Two years, you mean last, the current year in 2023?
Yeah, 2022 and 2023 at the same time, yes.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Peace?
Well, just to bring up the Main Street Fire Station. That fire station's been there how many years now?
A very long time period. I would defer to my fire chief on that.
Senator?
Mark? Yeah.
Yeah, please come to the podium.
I'm sorry, I don't know the exact date, but I would say it's the late 50s, mid 50s.
And spending $2 million to get another one, that's kind of the last, that's a minimum, we'll say 25 years, that expenditure is gone for the next 25 years. Was it five, well, $5 million?
Yeah, I think that's a two-part.
Yes.
Two and, yeah, yeah. Yeah, it's way overdue. There's a lot of health and safety concerns with that building at this point. It's been, it's beyond its lifespan.
Thank you.
Further discussion from the council? Public comment? Back to the council. Anything else you'd like to add, Administrator Hunter?
No, at this point, unless there's questions, further questions from the council?
Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Excuse me, counsel from Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
Word Two?
No.
Word Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of six to one.
Agenda item number 12.
Agenda item number 12. Adoption of a new city policy regarding the creation of the Lewiston Seniors Advisory Council. Requested action to adopt and establish a new city policy manual, Policy Manual Number Thirty-two Lewiston Seniors Advisory Council.
May I have a motion? Counselor Peace followed by Counselor Clement. Discussion? Counselor Peace?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Is there going to be an application for the nominated people?
Yes, we were talking earlier today that with the public art and this particular soliciting volunteers and using our normal application process.
Okay. I already have somebody, that's why I'm mentioning it. Thank you.
Counselor Herman?
Thank you. I just had a question of how this, how this language would work with the remaining term that we're in and the upcoming three-year terms that are going to happen for some counselors and how, you know, how that's going to affect the language that's in here.
Right. Based upon how it's drafted now and the two-year terms that each volunteer would serve, an incoming counselor may not get to appoint somebody their first year, but they may be able to, they would be available to appoint the second year. With the staggered terms in some of these committees, we're going to have to kind of see how things work to see if we need to amend them once we go through the process a few times. But that's kind of how it's designed as it stands right now.
Okay, because it seems like, it seems like then the members wouldn't necessarily line up with the, with the counselor who appointed them, as we had mentioned before.
Not for their full term, potentially.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Further discussion? Counselor Clement?
To Counselor Herman's point, would it be beneficial perhaps to consider making the appointments coterminous with the council in that ward? Is that what I'm hearing? I don't know, there's no feel for that amongst my colleagues or not, but that would solve that issue, I would think.
I was just.
Counsel.
Sorry.
Sorry, are you finished, Counselor Clement?
Yes, I am. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
I'm now recognizing Counselor Herman.
I was just not really greatly concerned about it, just wondering, you know, just so nobody would be surprised in the future.
Public comment for this agenda item?
Ronnie Perry, Ward, Ward Six. I brought this up to counselors way back in the last council, but nothing was done, and I think it was because of COVID. Do you know that over 10 million older adults live in poverty? That's the entire population of North Carolina. Do you know how many teachers are living under, retired teachers are living under $20,000 a year? I'm a senior, I know what it's like to lose a spouse and worry and be on fixed income and worry about how I'm going to pay my mortgage and everything. These are the things that many seniors and many of my friends are facing. I'm really worried about this fall and what's happening to oil and gas. People say, "Well, these people have a roof over their head." How many might lose their homes because they can't pay for heat or they're on fixed incomes? How many are eating cat food and dog food? You don't know that because our seniors are too proud to come to you and tell you they need help. They need help, and we need to hear from seniors, and we need to have this council that can take it to seniors and pick up their problems so that people in the city of Lewiston, not just the homeless, people on the verge of losing their houses, people, and you need to look at that, okay? We can't, we've got to do prevention. On homeless, we do prevention. Prevention, prevention, and we've got to.
Do you mind stepping back just to?
Okay. I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, no, no. Please continue.
My voice is loud, it's always. I know I have a loud voice, and I'm not afraid to say anything, and anybody that knows me knows that, but I always go to, directly to the person. And anybody on the staff that knows me from a long time ago know that, too, and everything. If I have a complaint, and I have a complaint because our seniors are not being heard, and a lot of other people are being heard, who votes for you? Look at the state of Maine. State of Maine is the oldest state in the nation, and they're the ones who vote for you people. You need to look at what seniors are saying, and you might need to go to them on a one-to-one. Thank you. Please vote for this, and I agree that each counselor should pick somebody from their district so we have diversity.
Further public comment on this agenda item? Back to the council. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counselor from Word Five?
Yes.
Word Six?
Yes.
Word Seven?
Yes.
Word Two?
Yes.
Word Three?
Yes.
Word Four?
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
Am I to understand my agenda item number 13?
Yes, sir. Item number 32. Repeal of City Policy Manual Number Twenty-nine, Appointment and Promotion in the Fire Department and Replace with a Proposed Policy. Requested action to repeal City Policy Manual, Policy Number Twenty-nine, Appointment and Promotion in the Fire Department and replace in full with a proposed City Policy Manual, Policy Manual Number Twenty-nine, Appointment and Promotion in the Fire Department as recommended by the Fire Chief and the Human Resources Director.
May I have a motion? Counselor Clement, or Counselor Peace followed by Counselor Clement? Discussion? Discussion? Or anything you'd like to say, Director Torio?
Yes, so this policy was already agreed upon by myself and the fire department. So what we're looking for today is just approval from the council.
Counselor LaChapelle?
What prompted this decision to go this way, this route?
So the policy.
Can you please speak into the mic?
Sorry. The policy originally came to me from the fire union, so I had some more revisions that I hadn't originally sent to you guys the first time. So we determined that this would be the easiest way to get the policy that the fire union and myself had agreed upon.
So the union, the staff, the fire department, and the city are all in agreement?
Yes.
Wow, everybody at the same time?
I know.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Further discussion from the council? Public comment on this agenda item? Back to the council? Anything further you'd like to add, Director? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counsel from Ward 5?
Yes.
Ward 6?
Yes.
Ward 7?
Yes.
Ward 2?
Yes.
Ward 3?
Yes.
Ward 4?
Yes.
And Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of 7 to 0.
Agenda item number 14.
Item number 14, amendments to the solid waste policy regarding the EZ Card Program. Requested action to approve the proposed amendments to policy manual number 53, the solid waste policy as recommended by the Director of Public Works.
So moved.
Second.
Counselor Pease, followed by Counselor, or seconded by Counselor Harriman. Discussion? Anything you'd like to add, Director Brenner? Public comment? Back to the council? Counselor Pease?
Will the, will you be able to purchase another 1,000-pound certificate if you use yours up?
The anniversary date that anyone has continues to roll, so if you got it December, it renews in December. Anyone buys a new, hasn't been, had a pass in the, an EZ Pass before, it would renew in that year. So those are part of the program, that it still gets renewed every year.
My, this, my question is, is if I go to the dump several times and I use up my 1,000 pounds, I have to start paying for it, or can I buy another?
If it's been less than a year, you'd pay for the balance that you're still bringing to the dump when it ends up being an anniversary that you have. You have an annual, an annual allotment of that free 1,000 pounds once a year.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion from the council? Public comment? Madam Clerk, do we already have, go to public comment for this?
Uh, we have not.
Oh, public comment then. Back to the council? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counsel from Ward 5?
Yes.
Ward 6?
Yes.
Ward 7?
Yes.
Ward 2?
Yes.
Ward 3?
Yes.
Ward 4?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of 7 to 0.
Agenda item number 15.
Item number 15, resolve authorizing a transfer of $474,170 from the various capital projects to fund the $445,000 fiscal year '23 Lewiston Techno, Technology Plan and $29,170 from Lewiston share of the AL Airports Flight Simulator Purchase, subject to the City of Auburn appropriating their share. Requested action to approve the resolve authorizing a transfer of $474,170 from various capital projects to fund the $445,000 fiscal year '23 Lewiston Technology Plan and $29,170 for Lewiston share of the AL Airports Flight Simulator Purchase, subject to the City of Auburn appropriating their share.
May I have a motion? Counselor Jolinas, followed by Counselor Pease. Discussion? Counselor Pease?
Are we going to approve both of these at the same time, or are we going to do them separately?
They can be, because they're capital project transfers, they can be done at the same time.
But what if Auburn doesn't fulfill their end on?
The Auburn's portion is just related to the simulator.
Okay.
So we can approve our portion. If they don't, then that transfer does not move forward until Auburn decides to deal with it.
Okay, thank you.
Excuse me, sir, I, I think I recognize you as the airport director. May I have your name again? Please, yeah, please come to the podium.
My name is James Scheller. I'm the airport manager for the Auburn-Lewiston Airport.
There we go, thank you. Any further discussion from the council? Public comment? Anything you'd like to add, sir?
I will say that I was at the Auburn City Council meeting yesterday, and they did put this to their vote and they approved it unanimously, so they're, they're all in on this. I really like to thank the council here for, you know, having me here tonight, and I just want to let you know that this simulator is actually an extension of the Lewiston Education Department. You know, I know they have an aviation programs locally. This right here will add that opportunity for those students excelling in aviation to actually learn how to fly. This is a certified, FAA-certified simulator. It will be partnering with the University of Maine, Augusta, the same program. This will be a satellite location. We'll have the UMA name out on our marquee, and this Part 141 program actually offers students that are looking for scholarships, grants, Pell Grants, even the GI Bill, to use that money for this because it's a structured flight training program, ground school.
That's awesome.
I've been waiting for this my whole life, so, thank you.
The Top Gun movie has made it very exciting. Thank you very much.
Further, thank you, sir. Further discussion from the council? Counselor Pease?
This is not so much that, but I wanted to comment about the, that new restaurant. I understand it's going really, really well, and everybody that's been there rave about it, so I think this is a good addition.
Thank you very much, sir. It is very delicious, and Chef Dan Karan has made, made a big hit out there. Part of my responsibility as the airport manager is fiduciary duties, and that's generating non-aeronautical revenue. Through this simulator program, it will generate revenue for the airport. The turnaround for this, the COI is, or ROI for this is probably about a year to a year 18 months, and after that, the airport will be generating revenue between $60,000 and $80,000 a year. That means we'll be asking for a lot less money at this airport. There's a couple other items in our budget this year as well. That'll be one-time purchases that offer more services, especially to the corporate jet community, and that will generate revenue as well. And like I said, it's about reducing the subsidy to the city taxpayers and everything and self-sustaining.
Very good, thank you.
Thank you.
Further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counsel from Ward 5?
Yes.
Ward 6?
Yes.
Ward 7?
Yes.
Ward 2?
Yes.
Ward 3?
Yes.
Ward 4?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of 7 to 0.
Agenda item number 16.
Item number 16, order authorizing the city administrator to negotiate a purchase-and-sale agreement and execute all necessary closing documents for the acquisition of 75 Park Street. Requested action to approve the order authorizing the city administrator to negotiate a purchase-and-sale agreement and execute all necessary closing documents for the acquisition of 75 Park Street.
So moved.
Counselor Jolinas, followed by Counselor Pease. Discussion? Counselor Clement?
Mr. Mayor, I notice in the final enabling clause, there may be a typo or grammatical error there, whereas the city was the top bidder and permitted to negotiation, should that not be negotiate?
That's correct, sorry.
With that amendment, if that's amended, then I think we'd be in order to move that along.
Madam Clerk, would that require amendment?
No, I think it's just a friendly amendment. It doesn't change the substance of the matter, thank you.
Thank you. Further discussion from the council? Public comment for this agenda item? Back to the council? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counsel from Ward 5?
Yes.
Ward 6?
Yes.
Ward 7?
Yes.
Ward 2?
Yes.
Ward 3?
Yes.
Ward 4?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of 7 to 0.
Agenda item number 17.
Item number 17, authorizing the purchasing agent to seek bids to purchase city-owned property located at 24 Walnut Street. Requested action to authorize the purchasing agent to seek bids to purchase city-owned property located at 24 Walnut Street.
Counselor Pease?
Second.
Followed by Counselor Harriman. Counselor Pease?
This parcel of land that, that's going to be involved with the redevelopment as well, isn't it? Isn't that the same area?
No, I was going to say, we checked with the choice area and it wasn't part of that, and there's some interest with butters and, and area property owners for this parcel, which is why we're bringing it to you independently.
Okay, thank you.
Public comment? Back to the council? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counsel from Ward 5?
Yes.
Ward 6?
Yes.
Ward 7?
Yes.
Ward 2?
Yes.
Ward 3?
Yes.
Ward 4?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of 7 to 0.
Agenda item number 18.
Item number 18, resolve seeking nominations for Andrus Goggan County Budget Committee Members. Requested action to approve the resolve seeking nominations for Andrus Goggan County Budget Committee Members.
May I have a motion?
So moved.
Counselor LaChapelle, followed by Counselor Clement? Administrator Hunter, is this simply to advertise or what?
Yes, after this vote, we, there will be three different groups of people we will be looking for to fill various roles. This is, is one of those three groups.
Something for everybody.
Yes.
Discussion? Public comment? Back to the council? Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counsel from Ward 5?
Yes.
Ward 6?
Yes.
Ward 7?
Yes.
Ward 2?
Yes.
Ward 3?
Yes.
Ward 4?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of 7 to 0.
We are now, reports and updates? Are there any from counselors?
Just to give you a little heads-up on the simulator that is being proposed, it's a fix simulator, it's not a motion simulator, and the reason for that is so they don't have to provide barf bags. To be honest, it's so that anybody can use it. I guess when you're dealing with virtual reality, if you get too intense, that it's, the average person can't handle it, so you, you should be awash in that when you're at the front of the line.
I appreciate that, thank you.
I'm sorry, we, thank you, we just usually share the council meeting before every election, just an election reminder for the, for the citizens if we could.
Please continue.
So we have the state primary election coming up a week from today, Tuesday, June 14th. All polls in the city will be open because it is a state election. Polls open at 7:00 AM and close at 8:00 PM. The deadline to request an absentee ballot is this Thursday by 4:00 PM, and tomorrow night, Wednesday night, the city clerk's office will be open until 7:00 PM for voter registration services and absentee voting. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Further reports and updates? Counselor Pease?
Have we lined somebody up to be assistant on the voting at the polls?
The assistant supervisors, yes, those positions are filled. Thank you, Counselor. Yes, thank you.
Are we ready for new business? Or Counselor Harriman?
Thank you. I just had a couple, a couple events that are coming up this weekend that I wanted to remind the community of. This Saturday, the 11th, will be the LA Pride March and Festival. Starts at Festival Plaza in Auburn at 10:30 and ends at Smart Pain Park. Also this Friday, the 10th, is the dedication of the John Jenkins Memorial Bridge, and starts at 3:30. The formal dedication is at 5:30, and then there's also the public memorial service and celebration of life on Saturday at 2:00 PM at the Armory.
Counselor LaChapelle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to touch upon another subject that our, our former council president came this evening and addressed on the May 24th situation, even though, and I have to be careful because I know the school committee is concerned when the council speaks about school committee issues. Linda's not here right now, Counsel from Ward 1, but I'd like to see how we can work in conjunction, and as a city counselor, this is our city, I am very interested in what they're talking about, school security and addressing it. Our former council president brought up a very good point. For $24,000, we can buy machines, and I know we can get that sponsored from our community. It's not, the cost of machines is the cheap part, it's staffing the machines and, and make sure they're running them all the time. Or, or is there a better, I don't have the answer. Is there a better way that we have officers in every school all the time? And that's another cost incurred, but I think it's time that we address or talk about the issue as a council and as a school committee, because these are all of our citizens, and I'd like to address it in a meaningful, non-fighting way and not trying to step on anybody's toes, just moving forward on this. And if they have a plan, awesome, would you just let us know what the plan is?
I can do that, yep.
Oh, well, I, I was just going to say, you know, after what happened in Texas, I did take the liberty of emailing our superintendent and police chief and asked what, what things were in place and when was the last time they did training. And, yeah, they both assured me that there were protocols in place, but, but perhaps an update from them might be in order. But Administrator Hunter?
The other thing that we talked about prior to the budget process really starting, we began having a joint kind of very relaxed kind of strategic, kind of get-to-know-you session, and we talked about having a second joint. This may be a topic, and if there are other topics that we want to include, please let me know and we can, I can work with the school superintendent to see when we can reconvene, because I think that worked out nicely, and we were able to cover some topics in a general setting to be able to share information, and I think that, you know, is important moving forward.
Yeah, please continue, Counselor. Time is of the essence, like everything, and if they, I, I really, I strongly believe it, and as former council president Morgan said, I own a gun store, so I'm definitely in favor of firearms, but I'm not in favor of what just happened, and I, I think we have to move forward and just make some kind of a, not, I don't want to make a statement for a fact, for the sake of a statement, just some kind of a plan, and if it needs, if the, if the school department needs the council assistance to move forward, I'm all for it, so, thank you. The sooner the better.
Counselor Clement?
Mr. Mayor, I can't disagree with anything that's been said. I mean, that was my livelihood for a number of years. I have talked with the police chiefs, current and past. I have been assured that we do have protocols in place, but I am all in favor of us getting together with the school committee, having an informal discussion, trust-building, whatever, and finding out. I, I realize that the topic is one that is very sensitive now. I'm a gun owner. I've carried guns professionally for over 45 years. I'm not in favor of what happened in Texas. I don't think I have the answers. I'm not sure who does, but I think it's going to have to be a collaborative effort. I think that we all have some common sense, and if we pool that common sense, like so many issues that face this body, then we're going to come up with an answer to the problem. But I do think it behooves us to get together with the school committee, the superintendent, police chief, the former police chief who's our deputy city administrator, I mean, he's got a wealth of knowledge. People have got 30-plus years in the police department here locally. They have the institutional knowledge. God forbid that that ever happened in the city of Lewiston, but I'm sure they said that thing, thing in Uvalde, I'm sure they said that in Buffalo, I'm sure they've said it all over the country, and it's perhaps not a question of when or if, I don't know, I hope it's neither, but we, we should be looking into the situation, not ducking our heads into the sand and saying it will never happen here. heads into the sand and saying it will never happen here. We've had a number of firearms incidents in the city over the last three years, we've had police officers that have been shot at, thankfully, nobody's been hit, we've had others, we've had firearms homicides, you know, it's, we are just a microcosm of the entire United States. You know, to sit back and say that it can't happen here is foolish. Thank you.
Counselor P.
I think, sir, I think if we could get a meeting set up, that would be great. My thing is, if we do a meeting, I'd like to see it just with the officials, not a public. I think it would give us a chance to vent what we want to say and how we want to say it without being torn apart or whatever at, at the meeting.
It would be a public meeting, but we do not have to allow, it would be no different than the workshop setting where you don't have to have public comment.
Okay, thank you. And can we get Green Laddel to...
I will, I will work with the school superintendent about that.
Thank you.
Counselor Clement?
I would think that perhaps some of the topics that might be broached in a session like this would be of such a nature that we could do somehow...
Excuse me, Counselor, can you please pick up the microphone?
I'll give it a try. I've been told that I am way too loud with the microphone. Perhaps some of the topics that we would be wanting to discuss in a session like this could be addressed in like an executive session, there are legal matters, I, security plans, protocols, those are not the type of things that we want to be advertising to the public. The public at large has no need to know how the police department is gonna respond in a certain instance.
And, and I would venture to guess that, I'll talk to the police chief about that. Looking at what Mr. Morgan was speaking of, those elements to discuss are, would be fair game. I fully agree with you, the security and the protocol and the plan is, is not appropriate to be discussed, and I would have to even deem his level of comfort of, of oversharing even with a, a large executive session as well.
Sorry, anything further, Counsel?
All set, thank you.
I think we're, are, any other new business at this point?
We need to move to an executive session.
Well, right, yeah, I, I think we're headed to the next agenda item, Madam Clerk.
I don't know that I have the agenda item, do you mind?
The executive session?
Oh, I do, thank you, sorry, yes. Executive session to discuss real estate negotiations of which the premature disclosure of the information would prejudice the competitive bargaining position of the city. Requested action to enter into an executive session pursuant to main revised statutes annotated Title I, Section 405, 6C, to discuss real estate negotiations of which the premature disclosure of the information would prejudice the competitive bargaining position of the city.
May I have a motion? Counselor P.
Second.
Seconded by Counselor Jolinas. Madam Clerk, please call the vote.
Counsel from Ward five?
Yes.
Ward six?
Yes.
Ward seven?
Yes.
Ward two?
Yes.
Ward three?
Yes.
Ward four?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Motion passed by a vote of seven to zero.
We are heading to executive session, and we will not be back. Good night, Lewiston.
Good night, Lacy.